I call the Village of Ryan Beck Planning Board Meeting for June 15, 2021 to order. First item on the agenda is Wendy Guerra, 22 Orchard Street, Special Permit Accessory Dwelling Unit. James is here.
Just in the nick of time, I guess.
Just in the nick of time. I can't believe Len's cap. Anyway, um, do we have, what happened, Ryan? You said they weren't ready?
I believe Mr. Guerrero is here. He might be able to.
Yes, I am here, Freddy Guerra.
Okay.
So, Mr. Guerrero, do you have any answers to the board's questions from the last time?
No, I spoke to the contractor, Billy, the contractor, who spoke to an engineer and the person that's going to check the ground for the cesspool. Uh, I think he's doing that as we speak. Probably we'll have an answer definitely by next month, your next meeting.
Okay.
It was like a short notice. It was like a two weeks' notice. So I spoke to the engineer and she says she's going to draw something up. And Billy said they're going to get on top of it and we'll have all your answers by next meeting if that's okay by you guys.
So, Mr. Chair, because prior notification went out, we can open the public hearing. And we can open until next time.
Okay. Do you have a motion to open a public hearing for 22 Orchard Street?
I'll make that motion.
Uh, do you have a second? Second. Okay, Jeff seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so it's open. So what we're going to do is hold the public hearing open until our next meeting because the applicant isn't quite ready yet. So, okay?
Does anybody here wants to speak?
One, one other question, Mr. Guerra, and some of the information you're going to get back to us on. One of the items, I think, that John Clark mentioned last week, and it were to calculate the allowable area. We would need to know the floor area of the primary dwelling. Because the accessory dwelling can't be greater than 25% of the primary dwelling.
That is correct. I believe, if I say it correctly, the garage area is about 30 by 30, which is 900 square feet. We're going to deduct 150 square feet from that, leaving open about 750. But we're probably going to be building on 729 to stay, to try to stay under the scope.
Okay.
Okay, you mean the calculation of the area in the accessory dwelling for, as no more than 25% of the floor area of the primary dwelling, correct?
That is correct. Yeah, that's the calculation we came up with, more or less.
Thank you, Mr. Guerra.
We have all of our questions from last time and hopefully you'll have the answers for us when you come back.
Yes, I spoke to Billy yesterday afternoon and he says he'll be ready by next time for sure. Billy, the contractor, that is, sir.
Okay, well, we'll see you at the next meeting.
Sounds great. Thank you all for your time.
Okay.
You should also show on your drawings where three parking spaces would be in behind the front plate of the building.
Yeah, in front of the building, I measured it, okay? You have the space, like, what was the requirement? I had measured it. It was, you said you needed like nine feet across and I think so many feet up. And I measured it and it was in spec also. Can you give me those numbers again if you remember them?
That's nine by 18 feet.
Yes, we have that. I measured.
It has to be behind the front plane of the building of the main house.
Yes, the main house is nine by 18. It's more than that, actually. When I measured it, it was more than that.
Okay, but you have to show that on the measured drawing so we can make confirm you have adequate parking spaces.
Sounds good. I'll let the engineer know that and they will do that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for that information too, by the way, sir.
Hey. All right, so, um, the next item on the agenda is Lydia and Michael, Slavy, 25 Mulberry Street.
Oh, I had, I'm sorry, I had a question.
Yeah?
Yeah, um, my name is Susan and I live in the house, the house in back of Freddie. And I'm just a little bit wondering about more like privacy issues. Like, is there any plans for a hedge or a fence or something to, you know, give a little more of a buffer between the two properties? More similar to maybe what we have now.
Well, we have to see the plans.
Okay.
And then, and then we can make sure that happens with, is there were setbacks? And we can, we'll ask about fencing and privacy screening, but we can't do anything until we see the plans. And, uh.
Okay, I'm not really, I guess I'm not familiar with how, how this whole process works. This is the first time I've been to one of these kind of meetings. So, once you have the plans, will we have another meeting?
Hi, hi. So this is the clerk, Ryan. I can jump in here. So right now, the board has opened the public hearing and it's going to remain open until Mr. Guerrero is prepared enough to present a more formal plan to the board and to the neighbors. And that hopefully will take place July 20th, 2021, at 7:00 PM.
And then you can look at the plans and you'll be able to see what kind of fencing, what kind of privacy screening he's planning on. And then if you don't like that, you can ask the planning board to, you know, if we could request more or, you know, that's why we notify the neighbors within a certain distance of the property to get their input. But unfortunately, we really can't do it yet because we don't, we can't even look at the plans yet and see what it's going to look like.
Okay, and then we'll be informed when this next meeting is going to happen again.
It'll be July 20th, 2021. It's Tuesday and the meeting will begin at 7:00 PM.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'm, I'm talking with the, the building going in. I just, my, my concerns were more about privacy.
But we'll talk about landscaping and screening and everything once we have a plan that we can comment on. Okay, but we certainly welcome your input from all the neighbors.
Okay, well, thank you.
This is Freddy. Can I just have one second there?
Sure.
Okay, I believe my daughter had a reply for a permit with Brian as far as a privacy fence, six foot. And I think we were clear on that matter already. I don't know if Brian has that information with him as of now.
Uh, so, Mr. Guerrero, yes, a building permit for a fence was, was approved. Um, I don't know if your neighbor somehow their house sits higher over that fence. I, I don't know. I mean, this is sort of speculation right now. I think this conversation would be better suited once you have plans and once we have, you know, a better idea of the layout of the neighborhood and, and things like that. I really think.
An important thing that would help us is if you could have a snapshot of either Google Earth or Duchess Parcel Access to show us some of the adjacent properties. Because it's important to look at the adjacent properties so we can see how far their house, their garage sits from your house, your garage. Gives us a feel for the lay of the land around the property that's being worked on. Okay, that's. If somebody could get that, the engineer or someone, you can just get it from Google Earth and just get, you know, or Duchess Parcel Access and give us the property so we could see the houses and garages that are adjacent, you know, to you. Uh, and then, then we can understand your plan and where, where you might come close to the neighbor and require screening.
Well, there's, there are fences in the back of my house, my daughter's, and also on the side. On the side, on the left side of facing the house, actually, on the right side facing the house, gentleman by the name of Freddie owns there, and he has a wooden six-foot fence going around. We have informed him that we're going to be putting one of those, um, high, uh, six-foot fence also. Okay, which will be like a vinyl fence, I think it is, or the plastic fence, the white ones. All right, and we're going to wrap around just the back. This way, that'll be privacy for the neighbors and also for us.
Mr. Guerrero, that's, that's great information. I'm glad you're sharing it. I, I think at this point, because we have no reference, we can't see a reference, there's no plan. It's not going to serve or be a help for tonight, I think.
The important thing is to see where the buildings are, where you're going to have your parking lot and where the driveway would be. Because sometimes we see it, oh, you're going to be pulling in and, you know, if you come home at night, the headlights will be shining into the neighbors. Right now, we have nothing, as Ryan said. We really need, you know, your diagram and we need a Google map or Duchess Parcel Access of the adjacent property so we can get a feel for the direction that everything's headed. Driveways, the cars, the garages, the house, so we can make a, you know, intelligent decision.
Okay, and I just put everything down with what you just said and that's what we'll do, sir.
Okay.
So, we'll be ready by the next meeting for sure, sir.
And Susan, please come to the next meeting. Okay? All right, we'll move on to the next item. Ms. Lydia. Do we, do we have any answers?
No, we have no answers. None, zero. Actually, um, he was at the property, Mark, Mark was at the property the other day and staking it out and sort of trying to see where everything actually is. And, um, uh, we will see, but he, he, he does actually think that the garage, the barn garage is going to have to move into the setback in order to preserve enough space for the septic field. But we will see when we see.
All right, so, as Tom Eastland said, you'll be back.
I'll be back. I will not be back though in July because I will not be back in July. So I'll be back in August and then this whole thing will somehow get sorted out sometime, hopefully before December.
Can I ask a question? What was being done over the weekend at your house?
We were demolishing the garage.
Okay.
Yeah, um, and, uh, I got a building permit for that and, yeah. We were just demolishing the garage and the, um, and the, and the gazebo and taking out a hot tub. We're basically cleaning up the site plan from everything that people did sometime between 1975 and 1996. Um, so.
Now your backyard looks really big, doesn't it?
Yeah, it's awesome, actually. Like, since, like, we can actually start seeing things. It's pretty amazing. Um, so, yeah. So I am sorry that I keep showing up on the agenda and not having anything to say. Um, but here we are.
It was the old proverb, all good things come to she who waits.
With any luck.
With any luck.
Om namashva. So, thank you. I appreciate your patience. I will ask Ryan to make sure that I'm definitely not on the agenda in July because I won't be here.
Okay.
And, and we will, we will reappear in August and hopefully by then we will have the health department. I will have Mark's site plan and everything will be moving.
Can I ask a question? I know the village hall is still closed. Guys must be contemplating an opening date and thinking of a way that, you know, people would feel comfortable and not comfortable attending in public. And I'd love to figure out a way to have forever, you know, meetings live and on, on the air. Thinking of people nervous about COVID right now, thinking about, you know, a schedule.
Blue travel.
It's five degrees with a foot of snow, you know, and we can still continue. We cancel those meetings normally. But wouldn't we can go all Zoom for that day if the weather is inclement and we, and we could still continue? We'd never have to interrupt our schedule if we can figure out a way to do this live and Zoom.
Right.
If Gary.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're trying to figure that out. We're, we're starting in-person meetings in July with two of the members of the Board of Trustees not in town in July. So this is going to, the rubber's going to hit the road really quick on this question. Also, today, the governor restricted, sorry, didn't restrict, he lifted all, um.
Right.
Everything. So like, I, you know, at this point, we don't even know if remote meetings are still theoretically allowed.
Yes, there was a special dispensation for COVID.
Right.
But, I mean, I think they're going to keep, uh, uh, medical visits permanent. They're going to make it permanent part of the code now to pay for remote distance medical treatment because people love it. I don't know whether they're going to, you know, like, I guess you have to wait.
I would hope so, yeah. I mean, but like, we'll, we'll see. Um, I think that there, everybody's getting a lot of pressure to make sure that people can attend meetings from wherever they are. But we will see. And, yeah, I'll be certain to let you know once the village figures it out. But, yeah, I'll let you know for the July meeting.
Right. Well, maybe this fall sometime we can go live, but this is working because everybody can see the PowerPoints. It's almost better, you know, on Zoom than it is in person. Not that I don't want to see everybody. I miss everybody, but, um, there's been so many instances where you can look something up, someone goes on Google Maps, brings stuff up. I'm going to do stuff in a minute to show everybody's up. And the whole world watching can see the presentations. We don't have yet, you know, overhead projector or things in village for all that, you know, you don't get your big TV.
Right, so the TV, the TV might end up being used as like a separate Zoom participant. Um, and so anybody sort of coming in on Zoom can, would show up on that TV, but this, you know. I'll, I'll keep you updated.
Good.
Or that way.
Because I want to do it for the Historical Society at some point and I want to do the same thing. We've had members, I said, coming in from California, from Florida, live and asking questions of the speaker and stuff. It's wonderful and I want to keep that forever. I don't know, even if the government lists everything, how people, 50 people sitting elbow to elbow would feel comfortable in the library attending a lecture. I don't think that's going to happen. Especially all of our members are seniors for the most part and.
Yeah.
It's not going to happen.
I mean, they are saying that individual organizations and businesses can impose their own rules, but, you know, it's going to be chaos for a little while, I think.
Okay, well, thank you. Have a good Fourth of July.
Well, thank you. You as well.
See you when you return. All right, so, um, it was a question. I had a chat today with Justin about Livingston Street. If I, if I can share the screen, Ryan?
Yep.
Where, now where is my, uh, did I open this thing? Well, here it is. So, um, back to this now. The balcony, Juliet balcony, and zooming in on it, I fail to understand the meaning of this. Probably couldn't even get a chair out there. But it's not on the approved site plan. It's, it's right on the front of the building. It's something we would never have approved. And Justin wants me to call him tomorrow with what we, I said, I'm, I'm making a decision for myself. I want to poll the whole board about how they feel about this, about the balcony, and then I have to get back at it this again. Um, and, uh, this one. And, because my other question is, where the, here's the window that's, was there, where the shutters? They're gone too. So, uh.
Mr. Chair, I think you shared your screen too soon. Oh, see, is your file folder.
Okay, let me, uh.
So you're going to have to stop share and.
Okay, so, uh, how do I get back to full screen? Stop, share, and then share the screen. Go back to the folder and then go back to that. Do you see it now?
No, you, no, you, you can't go to the folder.
Oh.
But click on, what do you want to show first?
Uh.
Yeah, click on the, whatever picture you want to show first, David, and then, and then share, share your screen.
We'll bring the picture up and now I'm in full screen here. How do I, I'll zoom and then share the screen. There, there it is. It's there. What team living is this? Do you see it now?
Almost.
Almost. There we go.
There you go.
So, the shutters are all gone as well. And this is the front of the building. This is what you look at from the street. And now this window's gone and that strange Romeo and Juliet balcony is there. So Justin wanted to know if this should be coming in for modification to their site plan as well as a building permit, which they never filed for doing that? Or how we feel about that balcony and whether it should be put back to the way it was? So I wanted to get everybody's feeling, whether we should put this on the agenda for July 20th and have them or their representative come and talk about this? Whether you want to give an indication now whether or not we would even consider approving the Juliet balcony?
I think they should come in and talk to us, you know, I, I would consider it. I would hate to see them have to tear it out and put it back. I think it's relatively unobtrusive. But I think they should have gone through the process and they should come in and justify it and get a permit and, and approval. Um, and, you know, maybe they'll have the votes and maybe they won't.
Uh, this is the same situation as, uh, the Mulian and the picture window on South Street.
Yeah.
Where we're approving stuff after the fact, which is setting a precedent. You can do anything you want.
And 108 East Market, Chair.
And 108 East Market Street too. We made them take out the shutter stuff that wasn't on the plan. Um, and of course they built the giant chimney that wasn't on the plan.
And the covered porch.
And the covered porch. So I don't know. I mean, uh, if we start setting precedents that, well, it's better to, what is it, ask forgiveness than, uh, whatever. And so how do the other people feel? Michael?
Um, I was the first to actually see this coming and it took a long time. And I was like, what are they doing? We didn't have anybody. We had no sheriff, as you said, David, until it was quickly thrown up completely. Um, I think it looks to California. I'm not opposed to a small balcony in that spot. But I would say they would have to put, you know, um, appropriate wooden antique-looking balusters there, not, not pressure-treated two-by-twos. You know, replace this, this Malibu wire fence thing, you know? Or, or take it off and go back to the windows. And I want to see the, the shutters. I, I think, you know, the shutter should be there. And again, it's just another example of, uh, tell them what they want to hear and then do what we want to do. And so I think we should hold a little bit of fire to them.
The only thing that I can offer as the clerk is their building permit is still open. So they're not done yet.
What does that mean, Ryan, that they're not done yet, the permit's open?
So, being that the building permit is open, they have not contacted me to conduct a final inspection for CO, so, um, or certificate of occupancy. So they have the latitude of making these changes now or if they're holding on to the shutters until there's a final product and that's sort of last on the list. I mean, this is speculating right now, but, um, I think from what I'm hearing from the board, this is a site plan matter that needs, that they need to address as the applicants and the owners.
I, I agree with that. A question, did they come to us with a site plan review and a plan was approved and then they just ignored the plan?
Uh.
Yeah, this was not on the plan.
This, this was approved, this was approved in 2018. And they, they provided a set of plans for the building permit when they filed a building permit. Uh, I've reviewed, I have reviewed both sets. This, um, change is not on either set. So therefore it's a change order that they obviously did not know the proper channels and just did it. I mean, we ran into the same situation with 108 East Market Street. They constructed an exterior chimney and constructed an exterior porch and didn't realize they needed to return for planning board approval. And they admitted it. So we'll have to find out if these folks are, um, you know, willing to admit they're wrong.
And people, people keep doing it, I mean, you know.
I, I agree with both John and, and Michael. They, you know, we should definitely have them come before. If they're, if they want to alter the plan, they knew enough to submit a plan and a site plan and go through the whole process before. Frankly, to say that they didn't know that they, that it was okay to change things without telling people is a bit ingenuine. That, that doesn't leave me with days. So I agree, they should, they should come back to us and with a site plan and, and ask permission. And we should review it and determine, you know, if we, if we agree with it, you know. I, I really started to get a little tired of people doing what they want to and begging forgiveness and us saying, well, since it's already done, I guess we'll let you do it, you know? At some point, a line has to be drawn.
People will do whatever they want to do and tell you, just go to the planning board and you file a change of plans. It's not a problem.
But I, so I agree, the next step, I, I agree, should be that someone should tell them you have to come up with an altered site plan. The site plan has to be re-ruled. You have to go through the same process you went through in 2018 and we'll make a determination.
All right. All right, so Ryan have, let them know they need to come on the 20th.
Oh, I, I will not be doing that directly, Mr. Chair. I'll be having our code officer draft a letter. I'm just the one that stuffs the envelope and puts it in the mail.
Okay, so you're going to, because he told me to contact him tomorrow and let him know what happened. So you're going to let him know what happened?
I will let him know that the consensus of the planning board is that, um, it is, it appears that there's a site plan violation. And that letter needs to be sent to the owner and the representatives that they need to return uh, to the planning board to correct the violation.
Okay, good. Anybody have any other items they wanted to talk about before we get to the minutes?
Uh, the former Zephyr is Gyrotonics, big sign, now open. We haven't seen anybody from them come in.
We're working with them, Mike.
Okay.
Uh, the owner came in, we're working with them. Uh, she's trying to figure out her signage and, um, it's, there's a question of how do we interpret a fitness studio under, under our code? Past practice, especially for the other locations in the village, above the department store um, and one or two other locations, is it's been seen as a service business, but, um.
We have yoga studios, karate.
Ken and Justin wants to be, you know, 100% making sure that that is the correct.
If they can look at all the approvals for the Pilates studio, yoga studio and the other things that we have.
Correct.
Karate, they have a karate studio, things like that. And I guess that's, that's what you could consider. You know, let, let them take a look at it and get an interpretation. I'm glad we have some, some backup here, which is great.
So, yes, we're, we're, we're doing all the homework.
Good.
So hopefully she'll be here on the 20th of July.
Well, I love, thank you, Michael, for being our roving reporter. Your daily walks through the village, or man in the street. So nobody has, uh, any other issues? We had, I want to thank Jeff for doing a very detailed review of the two sets of minutes. And, uh, Michael made a good comment about, you know, we, we used to have like three or four Johns in a meeting. So probably, you know, last names are a better approach than, uh.
Yeah, I got confused reading it. Who's John they were talking about?
Right. So last names would be, would be pretty good, uh, to make, to make the minutes a little clearer. So you want to approve them or wait until we get the, uh, file corrections so we can just vote, vote for them as amended?
I think we can vote for them as amended.
Yeah, I think, I think Ryan sent them out. I, I looked at them. They look fine to me.
I did. It was about, um, 2:00 or 2:30, I think.
So we had April 6th, April 20th and May 4th?
Uh, not April 20th, Chair. There was an issue with those. It's April 6th and May 4th.
Okay, so we're going to hold up on the April 20th one. It's on the agenda. Okay. Let's do that. All right, do I have a motion to approve the April 6th minutes?
Make a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then we'll skip April twenty and we'll go to May four. Uh, motion to approve the minutes of May four.
Motion?
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, I had a, a long chat with Ken a few days ago and with Justin today. And I'm happy that we have some support staff. And I think you saw the RFP that Lydia prepared is going out to get us a planning and zoning attorney to support us as well. So shortly we should have a legal and zoning, zoning support uh, when we need them. I don't think like tonight, I, I wasn't gonna tell Justin to, you know, turn on to the meeting. And another reason Lydia to be able to do something like this is because if Ken and Justin live far away, they don't, they can come to the meetings or be at the meetings without being at the meeting. So it's really, uh, it's good to be able to have a, a dual meeting going on at the same time forever.
Who is Justin?
He works for Ken. So.
He's our current zoning enforcement officer, John.
Justin, what's his last name?
Noyes, N-O-Y-E-S.
And he's been working for assistant to Ken. Ken handles, I think, I said, Ken, Justin has taken five different municipalities. And Justin's been helping him and he's been assigned out to be our direct liaison unless we need Ken's help as well. Um, uh, and they both reiterated, both reiterated to me that with, with the South Street Molyon, they both, they were there, both of them were there and said, we would suggest that you go to the planning board uh, and ask them if the Molyon down the center would look okay. We would never in a million years tell anybody, oh, you have my permission to do this. They say, we know Ken's had to do this for thirty-five years and I would never say, I would never speak for the planning or zoning boards, never. I said, I assumed so. I didn't think that that was correct, but, so we're okay on that. So uh, any other items?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have some procedural items that need to be approved.
Okay.
Um, so I need a motion and a second to approve the planning board summer meeting schedule. Uh, these meetings to take place July twentieth, twenty twenty-one and August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, I will make the motion for.
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye. And it looks like I will be able to come to the July twentieth, my vacation starting the twenty-second.
Good.
Gold in two, two days. What timing.
And hopefully Suzanne can come out. I wanted to really take this opportunity. I didn't think I'd, I'd see you except on the street again, James, for really pitching in and helping. It was wonderful. You were able to help us the last few months while we search for new board member. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item, Chair, I mean, I don't know if we need a vote or, or a motion, um, just Ken and Justin need sort of this is more of a formality, uh, request from the planning board uh, to provide an advisory letter pertaining to the presentation given by Ed Kellogg of Maribou and in Spa from uh, the last meeting, which I believe was uh, June. It was either the June first meeting or the May eighteenth meeting. I really wish I had made a note about that.
But what did, he said he's not gonna even think about this for another year.
I, I know, but he needs something in writing, Mr. Chair, before he can, I guess, give his professionals the, the go ahead to start, you know, moving their pencils and pens and compasses and.
So what did you want from us? What does he want from us?
He just needs sort of a formal green light uh, to proceed.
So you want to make, put in the minutes that, uh, we just approved the last minutes. But to put in today's minutes, that we did have a discussion with Ed Kellogg and the board uh, seemed favorable. This is a, a, a good idea and within the uh, parameters that we could, that we've established for the spa. That, something like that?
Uh, some, yes, that's good. If we can just add, uh, to ask, uh, for an advisory opinion from the uh, zoning department and, and the zoning officer.
Okay, we can put that down too then. Then we can get um, a note, a fish, a letter from Ken or Justin that says, uh, uh, what I just said, that it, 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 there is adequate parking, there's adequate space, there's adequate everything for doing this, um, uh, to add, to add this on a modified site plan. Whatever they, what they, what they want to put code wise in a letter like that. They have my authorization to send them something like that.
But, but this doesn't represent any kind of commitment. This, what are they just asking for permission to work on a plan to present to us?
That's the uh, uh, I guess in, in indication, I received Jeff from Mr. Kellogg that uh, he needs something formally in writing before, I don't know, somebody okays the money to start.
Hey, I think it's banking. I think, I think you need, you need to show that before you secure funding, you need to, the bank wants to know that this project is looked favorably upon.
I don't know if it's.
I don't know.
I don't know.
He's looked at the code and these are the, you know, that it's within the setbacks, that the parking um, seems to meet the standards or is within the, you know, it doesn't have to, it's not like an approval letter. It's just a letter that is reviewed by the code officer. And that it appears to be uh, compliant with the code and will not need extra variances or whatever.
Right.
From my discussions with Ken and Justin, uh, this is not committing the village in any way of showing, um, that, you know, this is a approvable um, plan that Mr. Kellogg talked about. This is just that um, it meets the uh, standards as described in the uh, code.
Right. Well, Justin, you know, well, you're gonna call Justin tomorrow, but I, I could, I could talk to him and see what, you know, if you want to give him a call tomorrow.
If he needs any, uh.
Tell him to call me.
You know, final, final uh, confirmation, Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll let just Justin know that.
Excellent, good.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, anybody else have any other comments? All right, everyone have a great and safe Fourth of July. Don't blow any fingers off or anything setting up your fireworks. Um, and have a great time. Hope we can get out there and uh, hang out with family and uh, get a little bit back to normal in life. All right?
Amen to that.
Amen to that.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. James Davidson seconds it. All those in favor? I
Aye.
Have a great holiday. I'll see you guys all in four weeks.